Promise the microphone to Ms. Counselor Hill.
So, first of all, Mr. Chichioni, am I saying that the right way?
You are.
Okay. So, thank you for coming this evening, and as you can see, we're a little raucous down here. I think that I have made my feeling very clear about this process, and at some point, through the normal RFP process, I would be most happy to have an opportunity to interview Mr. Chichioni. But I don't feel that this process, as it is happening right now, is fair. I'm concerned that it's not consistent with ethical standards. I don't think it's fair to other candidates, and I don't feel right about participating in it. So, I'm going to recuse myself from the interview portion of this, and at some later point, if the process is different, I would welcome the opportunity to interview Mr. Chichioni. But I'm sorry, I can't do it under these circumstances, so I'll be recusing myself from the table.
What she said, and I, the same thing, this is no disrespect to you. If you applied and I had your resume, I would definitely interview you with other candidates if this was done the proper way. I agree with everything that Trish just said. This process, to me, is unethical. I don't like what it looks like, and I won't be participating.
I also feel the same way.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, we're back in session. Do you need to grab anything? Welcome to Tiverton.
Hi, Mr. President.
And I again want to also say thank you to Mr. De Sisto for hanging in there through, which obviously is a very contentious evening. I know it's neither of your first rodeos either. So, what I think, the concern, one of the concerns that I have, is it doesn't sound like the draft engagement letter has been sent to the full body, and we need to, we need to just make sure that it's clear, if we choose to proceed, what that would be. I want to allow you the opportunity to speak to, and by the way, there are no other, I don't know what word I should use, candidates, but it is on the agenda for other potential candidates, but I'm not aware of any other folks that have expressed an indication of interest.
Did you close the floor to the publics?
It's closed for the moment, but I'm going to reopen it for anybody that didn't get to speak, so you'll definitely be able to speak. I just, I just want to make sure that, and I mean, unless I lose one more counselor, I'm not leaving, so we'll keep a quorum and we'll keep going. So, just some preliminary summary comments, and I want to make sure we tackle some of the tough issues. This is, you might say, a sort of a working interview, given what you've just observed, but at least from what I understand the process to have been, this term of the council has been seated for thirty or thirty-one days. We've met five times in thirty-one days. Mr. De Sisto tendered a resignation. To his credit, he has agreed to support us through the transition, and we're very appreciative of that. I can't remember which, it was either Mr., I think it was, I had suggested, because Nancy is an attorney, that if she at least come back with a suggestion of what a process would look like. And the suggestion that we discussed was for an interim appointment only, interim appointment only. In fact, I frankly think if you kind of listen to what's been said and you ignore some of the, there's actually a lot of agreement here, and what I think there is definitely agreement on, what I think there is agreement on is a full review of an RFP process to answer some questions. I'll be very transparent. I want to cut the budget on legal spending, okay? I think it's a little heavy, but, but that wouldn't take place until July 1st, okay? We need to deal with a vacancy, which we did not create. We need to deal with that vacancy. And I think there is room for some talk about, I was discussing a question with Labor Council the other day, actually, about what are the rules here? I mean, is any one of us allowed to talk to you? Is it, is, I mean, at what level does it become unreasonable? If Donna calls you every day, what if, you know, there's forty or fifty boards in the town? I mean, can they all ask you to attend those meetings? And there needs to be some, some thought about that, and there has been some issues with that, and I think we can resolve that, we just need a little bit of clarity. And there are some other touchy issues with communications with council that others are not aware of, and I think we just really need to address those, and I'd like to address those in a very global sense. And recall, too, that there's more, there's a lot to the job, not just staffing these meetings and, you know, the contract work, but there are prosecutions, and there are zoning, and there's planning, and there's, we didn't even talk about bond counsel. I mean, there are a lot of features in the legal portfolio, and I don't, I haven't heard any sense that we're looking to disturb anything with Labor Council or with Bond Council. And I think there is also room to explore whether it would be possible to retain special counsel in certain situations, perhaps a litigation matter, if the rate was right, things along those natures. So, I just wanted to set the table from at least what I view. I can see there's some people that are unhappy with this, but the way I see it is that it's quite simple. The solicitor resigned, we are doing a very full process, and we are looking for an interim for six months within the budget that we have, and it's that it. And I know there's a lot of people that are trying to make issues that are not issues, but to the extent that there are any affiliated or any appearances of impropriety, we're not going to be involved in them. And I believe, as I understood the draft of your engagement letter, you also do not want to be involved with them pending the advice of the Ethics Commission, which I have heard people ask twenty or thirty times tonight. So, I'd like to maybe put you on the hot seat. I think you've heard a lot of concerns. Speak a little bit, if you would, to your experience, a little bit about your indication of interest, and I, I, if there's one thing I strongly believe, it is that it is not only the right, but it's the obligation of all seven counselors to go out and do their own individual research and study, and it happens all the time. They talk to it. The people that left the table have talked to other towns and done their own research, and they don't speak for the whole council, but it's part of their job. So, I have no problem whatsoever, that Ms. Riggs apparently has spoken with you. I don't believe she's represented, I have not. I just met you for the first time tonight, and I've heard some discussion of a potential past business, right? And I'd like you to be very transparent about that. And so, why don't I stop talking and let you just give a general introduction? You know, it's ten, ten, and I want the public to be able to speak, so I'm kind of hoping we can do this for maybe fifteen minutes, unless, you know, and then we'll figure out where to go from there, okay?
Sir, thank you.
Don't you take it away.
And whatever, whatever, you know, stop me if I've gone too long. So, my name is Giovanni Chichioni. I'm an attorney with Cameron &amp; Mittelman, which is a firm in Providence. I was the, I believe, twenty-first lawyer there. For Rhode Island, it's about a mid-sized firm. We have a broad-range practice. We have represented cities and towns in Rhode Island, a number of them over the years. The start of my career actually was something similar to municipal law, but not quite. I was, for three years, in-house counsel to the State Economic Development Agency, and then five years served as outside counsel to that same agency. And that was during a period when, as Ms. Riggs pointed out, we were transitioning Quantset Davisville from Navy Base into a premier industrial park. And what's interesting about that work, and that was some of the first municipal-type work I did, was that you had an overlay of the town of North Kingston with the industrial park, with its own utilities, with its own security, with its own permitting, with its own unions, with its own layers, roads, everything built in there, plus the deep water port. And so, it was some of the most complex inter-municipal relations that the state has ever had to deal with. And I had the good fortune, as a young lawyer, to be able to be on the front lines there and, and not only participate in that, but help write some of the law, the ordinance, the operating code that Quantset ran under, as well as negotiate with the town of North Kingston how those two bodies would interact. So, that was very challenging work, very satisfying work, and it left me with a great respect for municipal law generally, and have always taken every opportunity over the next twenty-something years of my practice to make sure that I kept my hand in that type of work. And that may have been in land use or zoning or other areas. I can't count the number of times I've sat across from Mr. De Sisto in his capacity as solicitor for a number of towns, and always with great respect, as he beat me and or my clients up a bit, but he is a skilled municipal lawyer, and I do appreciate all the opportunities I've had to appear in front of him and the councils that he's been with. I think the other point I should make about my work with EDC as general counsel was that we had to oversee bond counsel, we had to oversee general counsel, litigation counsel. We did solicitations, we drafted RFPs. We actually reformed that process in my second year there, because there had been a laxity to the RFP process, at least in the opinion of that then-director. And so, we redid the entire process in order to make sure that the efforts that went into selecting counsel were as transparent as possible, were as open as possible, and gave the best value for the entity. That is not easy. It's always a balance. Litigation can be expensive, and it's not easy to predict those budgets, but I think what we did back then is still the standard there today, and I believe we are, you know, we were very successful in reforming that process and putting some, you know, measures in place to make sure that the QDC, at least at the time, was getting the best value for its legal dollar. And in some extent, that's how I see this role. I don't view this as a permanent position. I know with, with every town solicitor, you know, you have a shelf life. At some point, the council will change, or the tone will change, or people just get sick of you, or whatever it might be, and, and you have to move on. But I think what we can do in this, in this interim period, and what we can offer, is a set of best practices from our very long experience in Rhode Island as to how to, you know, move the town forward and leave not just this council, but the next council and the council after that, with good practices that save the citizens of the town money, but deliver very good value, more importantly. So, I think that's the core of, you know, the history that we bring to the table. And again, our firm has some of the top litigators in the state. We are in front of the Supreme Court on land use issues, on ethics issues, on zoning issues. You name it, we're there. And I think what you're tapping into with, with a firm of our size is the ability for us to assign the best lawyer that we have to any given matter. And, you know, that made me a different face in front of you at different times, and that may be different for a town who's used to seeing a steady, a steady hand at the tiller, but I think it also has a counterbalancing value, which we hope we can provide. And by the way, if that's not in the, in the interest of the town after six months, then you have the option, of course, to go a different way, but we think, we think you'll appreciate it. I think the, you know, the question of the ethics issue that was raised a number of times, you know, I've only looked at it preliminarily, obviously. I'm not the counsel for the town, but I can tell you that what I heard tonight regarding the withdrawal of the three members who are party to that suit satisfies me completely. I would also say that if it didn't for some reason, then in the proposal that we would have before the town, we would always have conflict language in there that's quite detailed, and specifically, language that says that if, if ever a member of a council, whether it was today or six months from now, was a party to litigation adverse to the town, then we would ask the Ethics Commission to determine whether special counsel is required. And I think every firm that you would hire would do the exact same thing, and if they didn't, I'd be surprised. And I can tell you that right now, there's the exact same kind of process going on in Little Compton next door. There was a similar issue. The Ethics Commission has that before them today, and we're waiting to hear what the answer is. So, it may actually get answered without you having to ask the Ethics Commission, because another town, neighboring town, has already asked a very similar question. And obviously, we, you know, we'd much prefer to get them to answer on somebody else's dime than your dime, and that may be the case sooner than later. So, I think the only other issue you asked, and I apologize if I'm forgetting any of the points you asked me to touch on, but the agreement itself that we've put together, this proposal, I'd like to talk about the details, but let me just first hit on the process, because I know process is important in these, in these efforts. Because of the expedited nature of the process you're going through right now, we didn't have necessarily the time and the ability to do things slowly, and it was my opinion that it would be good to get a draft document together. I knew that you had suggested that the counselors call me individually. Some of them took advantage of that, and, and we had good conversations. I would point out that we only had individual conversations, nothing that would constitute a rolling quorum under the restrictions on those types of faux meetings. But we did have individual conversations. I believe that's completely appropriate, and I welcomed the opportunity to speak to the folks who I spoke to. As those conversations went forward, I really heard two things. One, we want to be clear that we're getting a qualified firm to provide the services, and second of all, we are not going to spend a dollar more than we had budgeted this year. And I heard that loud and clear. And so, I looked through the current contract, the current letter agreement and the prior contract to make sure that this was something we could, my firm could agree to. We put a draft together, looking at the remaining budget numbers that were available on the town website, as well as trying to get a sense of what was budgeted in the prior contracts. And in, in my view, the best way to make sure that we had those numbers right was to send those over to Mr. Reitzman, who I've known, again, for some, some number of decades, I hate to say how many, but I know him to be a very thorough and diligent man, and I had no doubt that if I had anything wrong in my assumptions that I had pulled from the website or the town budgets or what have you, that he would, he would be able to quickly direct me to my errors. And he actually had come back with a couple of points. I think I might have transposed a couple of numbers on the budgets, but, you know, I think we are essentially in a position with this draft contract to provide the exact same services that Mr. De Sisto's firm has been providing within the remaining budget for the next six months. Again, obviously, subject to the vagaries of litigation and other items that can, can run afoul of budgets. But in that case, what we agreed to was that if we are going to exceed your budget in a given month or, you know, in the following month, we will bring that to your attention and ask whether you care for us to proceed on those matters or have some alternate approach.
And then, I just wanted to also make sure I put you on the hot, there's been this sort of, you know, you know, aspersion cast about a prior work that maybe you've done with an employer or prior employer, Mr. Katz. Is that something we should, you know, I just?
I'm happy to give you my, my discussion of that, yeah, absolutely.
To the extent you, you know, can.
I don't believe there's any confidentiality provision here. I did work as corporate counsel for the organization that Mr. Katz, and I'm not, honestly, I don't know what his position is there, whether it's a contractor or an employee, but I did work for the Rhode Island Center for Freedom and Prosperity in helping them get, establish their formation. And then, from time to time, I've undertaken work that we wouldn't necessarily classify as lobbying, but because it involved drafting legislation, I would occasionally register as a lobbyist, because I would be called to go testify on that draft legislation. And while I don't think I was technically lobbying under the state law, you know, I don't know, an abundance of caution, the ten dollars or five dollars or whatever it is to register was well worth it, but they had, they had hired separate lobbyists to undertake lobbying work. But that's consistent with a lot of my practice. I've drafted ordinances, legislation, I've worked on tax policy, I've worked on zoning and land use policy, environmental policy. I've done that consistently throughout my career. It's not a primary focus of my practice, but it is always a consistent piece.
So, would I, and then, can you just comment just a little bit more on the, on the planning and zoning piece? Because the regular council advising, I mean, we're, we're here, we can see it happen, we're, you know, but we don't attend all the planning and zoning, and that's obviously such an important feature of the job, and I just want to, if you could comment a little bit more on that, please.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the primary focus, if I had to say, you know, where my practice, where I spend most of my time, it is with real estate development, land use, those types of issues. And so, I've, from my days at Quantset, when, when we were, you know, permitting the industrial park and planning the roads and dealing with environmental issues and federal transitions, I mean, every issue under the sun with regard to planning and zoning came into play, and every year, every, you know, consistently since then, I've been involved in those types of matters for, for clients. And so, I've appeared before, planning boards, zoning boards. I don't want to say in every city and town in Rhode Island, but I feel sometimes like I might have, and certainly, my firm has, every single city and town. And not only that, but we've also been involved in the appellate work, litigation work that comes out of zoning decisions generally. We've dealt with appellate work on low-income housing projects, you know, issues with the override of municipal zoning by developers. We've dealt with these issues day in and day out, and we continue to do so.
So, what I, what I think I want to do, I want to open the floor to the other counselors, and then I want to resume the public. I'm not going to allow the public to sort of interrogate you, but what I'd suggest is, if you would stay, and if there are any questions, jot them down, and then maybe I'll have you come back up one more time, if that's okay?
Fair enough.
And just make sure that we've addressed any other, any other concerns. I want to make sure everybody's got a fair shot. Having said that, do either of you three have any other questions or comments?
I would like to know, have you done solar farm ordinances, and what have you done, and in which direction? We're very concerned in this town about what's going on with, I mean, we've always already had a failure of an ordinance that was not quite right, and we don't want that to happen again. So, we're the final say. So, you would be able to, in that matter, be able to say if we're going in the wrong direction, or something needs to be tweaked, or, you know, I, I just don't want to have what happened that kind of fell in our lap, like we didn't know, and we didn't think, and I just don't want that to happen again. It just caused kind of chaos for everyone, especially for people that are looking to have solar in town on their land. It kind of left them kind of wondering what's going to happen, because we did repeal it, but, yeah, just if you could.
Yeah, I'm happy to try to answer that. That's, that's an incredibly difficult question, because as you know, that's a very new area of law, and I think some of the reason that we have ordinances that come and go is that, is that we're trying, as a state, in particular, to sort out how best to regulate this and what the layers of authority are. I have never drafted a solar ordinance for a town, so let me answer your question directly. I did help draft the renewable energy standards that the state has that are in part driving the subsidies for the solar, and they come through National Grid, and that's the reason that people can afford to put solar farms in, is that we, as the rate payers, electric users, we are subsidizing these massively. And so, what we're finding is that we are now in these positions where people are, are putting these arrays up that would not be financially viable otherwise, and they're getting subsidized, they're getting supported by funds and national groups that are paying for it. So, you end up in this, in this weird position between the, you know, if the market was to run its course, this wouldn't be an issue. You've got National Grid with a mandate to come and spend this money and to, and to push these things, and then you have the agricultural land rules, which are separate from the, you know, more standard municipal land rules. It's a, it's a complete mess, and that's really the short answer. I wish I had a better answer for you, but I won't. If I don't, if I don't, if I thought there was a clean answer, I'd tell you, I don't believe there is a clean answer here. So, that being said, I do keep up on the state of the art of this law. We do watch it, and, and I have, you know, worked with landowners who have been interested in exploring these types of opportunities. So, I have a current familiarity with it, but I would have to go back and see, you know, where, where things stand with each city and town to try to give you the best practices, and I, I haven't done that yet, but I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm.
It's not a question so much as to further on to the, the ethics component of the Center for Freedom and Prosperity. I've looked into this pretty deeply. It was, it's actually funny, in 2016, I think it was, GrowSmart went to the Board of Ethics and asked if their CEO had a business relationship with an organization that the organization had a business relationship with, and they said, no, which actually surprised me. That's a very broad allowance, that a CEO does not have a business association with an organization at his organization, as in this business. But at any rate, I'm not the CEO of the center. I have no hiring authority, and we haven't even worked together all that much. I mean, probably less than I want to. So, I, I, the idea that that business relationship would, would be an issue is just changed me. I want to, one thing I wanted to ask regarding the draft proposal you provided to the administrator, that is pretty specific, that the town is hiring Cameron &amp; Mittelman.
Yes.
And to the extent that the solicitor position has to be embodied in a person, that would be you.
Correct.
So, should, is it necessary for Nancy to adjust her motion in order to reflect that?
No, it's not on the agenda.
Okay. That was my only question.
Well, it's not on the agenda. It's one person.
Yeah, I think, I think that's certainly the custom of practice, but at the end of the day, you'd be wearing the bullseye, so.
I heard you say that before, Mr. President, and I appreciate that. I, I would, I certainly don't think I can answer that question. I think honestly, your solicitor, you know, may have to be the one to address that. I don't think it's appropriate for me to try to, you know, suggest what your procedure should be tonight. But I would also add just a, you reminded me of something, Mr. Katz, when you, when you talked about the business relationship. I do believe the last time I did work for the center, it wasn't actually my firm that did the work, it was a organization called the Stephen Hopkins Center for Civil Rights, on whose board I sit, that undertook the work. And so, it technically wasn't Cameron &amp; Mittelman, and I think that should just be made clear.
Okay. Okay, so, what I'd like to do is reopen the public debate. Feel free to take notes if you think there's something to respond to, and I think we should just, I want to make sure everybody that has something to say gets a chance to say it, okay?
Should I stay here?
Yeah, I mean, you might, just in case anybody's throwing anything at anybody. Thank you. Okay, so, I don't remember seeing a line, or maybe there, maybe we're getting closer. Does anybody else like to be heard, especially that hasn't been heard yet?
My name is Dan Featherstone, 50th River, Trelane. What I have here is a copy of the Skandt Times that I received today, the opinion page, and I'd like Mr. Katz to look at this and tell me if this is the statement that you made in the paper, if that's correct, and I'd like you to read the highlighted sentence that I put there.
Yes, I sent this in as a letter to the editor, and the highlighted sentence is, "Under our leadership, town government will not trample on electors' rights."
Okay, could you say that one more time, please? Right into the microphone, please. Could you repeat yourself?
The sentence you've highlighted on this letter to the editor that I submitted to the Skandt Times says, "Under our leadership, town government will not trample on electors' rights."
Can you speak louder?
I think I've read it twice, that's sufficient.
And when you stated, "our" leadership, what exactly, who are you talking about when you say that? When you say, "our" leadership?
The newly-elected members of the town council.
So, just the newly-elected members?
Right.
Which would be you four right there?
Yeah.
Okay. Based on what we saw here tonight, do you feel that you fulfilled your duty as a town council group, if you want to call it that? Because obviously, you're divided here.
Yes, I do.
That's pretty obvious. You think by what's taking place here tonight, that you have not deprived us as electors the rights that we deserve in this town?
I feel like we are following exactly what I wrote.
Really? Okay.
I feel trampled upon.
I definitely feel trampled upon, and all I can hope for, the next two years flies by really quick, because what I witnessed here tonight is a total disgrace. I can see why. I feel very safe now in the people who I voted for, and none of you four are one of those.
Amen.
I just want to make sure that anybody that didn't get to speak yet, unless they're happy to yield.
I, Sue Kramer's, I'm a Tiverton resident. I actually don't want to speak to the issue, but I'm wondering if I could ask Mr. Chichioni a question.
What I, what I'd like to do, if this works, is yes, but I want him to handle all the questions in one shot at the end. What I'm worried about is that this turns into like a two-hour.
Okay.
But you might, we might be running out of speakers, so maybe, I, yeah, why don't you go ahead and ask and see what happens?
I don't know where you're sitting now, Mr. Chichioni, but my question is, after you've observed all that's gone on here tonight, heard what's happened, could you, with your legal, ethical standards, even consider being voted in as our town solicitor in this fashion?
Good question. Any answer?
Well, let me just, and I'm not trying to cut anybody off, I just want a sense of how many other folks think they would like to speak tonight? I see two in line, so would you like maybe three?
Yeah. I have a question for you.
I think what I'll do is try to handle all the questions at the end. I think what I'll do is try to handle all the questions at the end. And please make, please make a note of them, as I will try to as well, okay?
Donna Edwards, 69 South Avenue. I have a question for Mr. Coulter. I know the relationship between Justin and the lawyer, but could you tell us how you know this applicant? The man in the back, I guess who works with, I don't want to abuse your name. You're, but you know him, correct? You told me that Mr., how do you say your name? Chichon? And Rob Coulter are good friends? Those were your words?
I am good friends with Rob.
Oh, but you also work with Mr. Chichon?
No, I'm in the past.
Oh, so, do you, are you from Tiverton? Where are you from?
Okay, okay, hold on, we're not going to examine the audience.
You know what? I don't want to...
I'll answer your question.
This is what he told me. I would like to know your relationship with this lawyer.
And I'm happy to address that. I literally just met Mr., I call you G O., for the first time tonight. I am very familiar with Cameron, Cameron Mittelman. So, they are, although they style themselves as a mid-sized firm, they're in fact, one of the top 10 largest firms in the state. They're very well-respected, and I know people that have worked there. I have also been opposing to them as well. And so, I am quite comfortable with the quality level, but I don't have any personal or business relationship with them.
But you know what my curiosity is? Is why people who are not from Tiverton are here on tonight, tonight, exactly? They're not from Tiverton, but why are your friends from law school here? I mean, is something, I just get the feeling that something's going on.
Impropry.
Yeah, a lot of impropriety.
You're asking me a question about a friend from law school? Okay. I answered your question.
Right. But he told me you were good friends, whatever. Sorry.
A lot of sorrys all over.
Mr. Chichion, can you address our relationship again? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Renee Jones, 161 Highland Road. I just want to go back to Lisi Gashite. I feel like she was probably one of the best speakers we had. She raised a lot of issues. She has the background in the town. She has the background legally. I think we need to listen to her advice, and she recommended that you go to the Ethics Commission before you do anything for a finding, and that she couldn't understand what, why you were rushing to put a temporary person in, when the RFP, you're talking about six months now, you're using the term "six months," you'll be here for six months. I thought this was just a fill-in, and in six, in two months, we could probably have a permanent replacement, and he could be the person. So, I'm not quite sure why we're having this intermediate step. I think, you know, you keep talking about December 10th, and had you all, every one of you started with the RFP on December 10th, we would be a month, in, close to a month into the process. You know, why are we waiting to start the RFP with this kind of intermediate step? It just doesn't make financial sense to me. It doesn't make sense in terms of time. If you, if this man is qualified, and he sounds very qualified, I have no problem with that. I don't understand why you're, why you're kind of going through all these extra steps. It just does not make sense. Do the RFP, get the other applicants. If he's the best applicant, that's what you do. It just seems like you're going through an awful lot of gyrations for something that... You were asking Mr. Coulter right in the beginning, it seems like we could find common ground. I think we can. Have Mr. Chichon apply when you have the RFP. If he's the attorney you want, he gets hired. It's that simple. It's not, there's this other intermediate step that everybody's having a hard time with. So, if you're looking for common ground, I think that's it. Thank you.
If I could just answer that question, the idea was, as we discussed at prior meetings, we didn't want to rush through an RFP process, and so, this is to, and the current, the status quo is not acceptable. The status quo is not acceptable, so we wanted to get somebody in place to tide us over and have an extensive, and that's the status quo that is not acceptable, in my view. Well, that's why we're, that's why we're doing this process.
But see, that's the difference. We have somebody in place who's familiar with the town.
It's 10:30, Rob.
Okay. Okay, to proceed, Chair? Okay. Dan Darren, let me speak rhetorically for just a moment or two, and then I have a specific question for the gentleman who's the attorney. We did ask earlier what the, what the fee was for this gentleman and his firm services, and when I asked the Chair, the Chair replied, "It's the same as it's ever been," which kind of reminds me of what I say to the police officer when he pulls me over on the highway, and he said, "Do you know how fast you are going?" Typically, I'll say, "Yes, the speed limit, officer." So, let me direct this question to the attorney then. Is this contract or proposal or draft, whatever the heck it is, is it on an hourly basis? And if indeed it is, what is the hourly basis? Since you people can't seem to be able to put a direct number on it, and since he's the receiver of the finances perhaps, and he knows what he's charging, perhaps he could either tell us whether it's an hourly fee, or whether it's a retainer arrangement, and what is the monthly retainer, or what other form of compensation is involved, you know, chickens, or, you know, any other quid pro quo, if you will. Thank you.
Did you want to jump?
Okay, I want to answer that.
Okay, I think we might be getting near the end of the line, unless Rick's already gone.
Rick's already gone. What's he doing?
I'm Rick Colas, elector taxpayer. Mr. Katz, you did mention earlier that you are a paid employee of the Center for Freedom and Prosperity.
Yes, I have a...
Okay. And on any occasion, has Mr. Chichion ever been paid as a lobbyist by that same group?
He explained that arrangement a few minutes ago. So, he's had a contracted agreement to work on matters for the Center, having to do with civil rights legislation, I believe.
Okay. But that is a group that you're associated with, they do, you are an employee. I'm just putting the tie together, how you know each other.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's one way. Yeah, obviously, as I said earlier, Rhode Island's small, and people who are involved in political and policy activities know each other. So, I've known Mr. Chichion longer than I've been employed with the Center.
Fair enough. Mr. Coulter, if I may ask you a very pointed question. I found online a lawsuit by an immediate member of your family. The lawsuit was against an employee of the town. In fact, the lawsuit was against Mr. Dave Robert. Do you recall that lawsuit?
Yeah, I do, I do.
And who was the attorney that litigated on your family's behalf?
I'm trying to remember. Did I represent myself?
Was it Mr., did Mr. Chichion?
No.
Who wasn't involved in that?
No. And I'd like to, since you brought it up, and that case is closed, it's, what's really interesting about that case is that none of this ever came up. That case was dropped, and everything was fine, which I think is very similar to what you're going to see here. So, if you, but it certainly wasn't, Chio.
Okay.
Answer your pointed question.
Okay, and I'm just asking a pointed question. It's, I'm looking for the answer, because earlier, when we started the meeting, we did have a postponement with Mr. Robert, and I just wanted to make sure that it was no, there was no, I don't want to say friction, but you had some past with him, not directly, but immediate member of your family, I just...
No, it was a tax case, he's the tax accessory, probably gets sued 20 times a year. You're going to hold, you hold me to it on January 14th, and the proof will be in the pudding on that issue, on that. But I'm glad you brought it up, because I think someone else said earlier, we went to the Ethics Commission, everything was fine, and I'm curious that these things that really do happen from time to time, recusers are quite common. So, we're going to be squeaky clean about it, and I trust you will hold us to it.
Okay. My last comment will be, before I let Mr. Rob speak, is, you know, there was a, there was a group of elector that put all seven of you in the seats that you sit in. I don't know how many of those people are here that voted more for the, for the TTA slate of the four. I think I could say that pretty openly. What I would hate to see is if the town halls pack like this a lot with issues that seem very important for people, there's a lot of voices being raised, people are very animated, and they're upset because they probably care. I wouldn't want to see the town go and take steps that we could remove people if they don't represent the people of the town. And I'm not saying this is a warning, and this is not a threat, I'm just saying, you're here to represent the town, this goes to all seven, but I, I just want to make sure that you're aware there are steps to remove people that seem like they're railroading the system and they're stacking the deck against. So, we just had a town council that did not gel very well, but I don't think it ever seemed as though it was stacked one way or the other, and this seems a little stacked right off the bat. This is an opinion coming from myself, those are my parting words. Thank you.
Good observation.
Hi, good evening. It's been a long night, so I'll be real quick. My name's Russ Smith, I live at 198 Meadowview Lane, and just in the interest of complete transparency, I didn't vote for any of you four guys. I voted for these three. And this is my first council meeting since the election, and I'd like to say that it seems like things are going well, but I feel like tonight I've been at like one of those dysfunctional family holiday dinners you see in the movies. I think you guys are off to a real bad start. I'd like to wish you well, because you represent the town, and the four of you are clearly a majority, and I imagine you'll be voting as a block. My guess is, we're going to see a lot of four to three votes in the months to come. But there's a right way to govern, and you guys, you're off to a bad start. And I'm just sitting here, and I've never been more disappointed to live in Tiverton, to be honest. You guys are not good leaders, from what I'm seeing. Open, open meetings violations, the RFP idea? I mean, we do RFPs to get people to help plow snow. And you're hiring a town attorney who's going to represent every taxpayer in the town of Tiverton, and maybe you can not do the RFP? I heard someone mention that that was the advice you got? I don't know, that might be true. I have no reason to doubt it. Just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should. We get RFPs all the time. The idea that, and I don't know the attorney that's here present, I can only echo what people have said, I'm sure he's competent, I'm sure he's ethical. I can't imagine why he wants to wade into this. But, to have one attorney, and you're going to vote tonight, I'm guessing, four to three, to bring him on board, when most of you haven't seen a resume? President Coulter, you've indicated that you met him for the first time this evening? Is that how you'd hire a personal attorney to handle a matter? I hope not. I would only suggest to you that you make the best of a bad situation, because this is really self-inflicted, I think. And again, I'm getting mixed messages. I don't know what the status of the litigation is right now. President Coulter, I think you sort of indicated that the matters are going to be dismissed, but I've also heard on social media, Mr. Katz indicating that he thinks that because there's nothing scheduled in court, they're not pending, which makes no sense at all. They're pending, until they're not, until they're dismissed with prejudice. I only heard Council Driggs flat-out say that you withdrew, that you have filed paperwork...
We all have.
You all have.
Not all.
I still don't have a clear answer on that. If someone were to go to the Superior Court...
I have filed a motion to withdraw as plaintiff.
And is there a hearing scheduled on that motion?
Yeah.
And when is the hearing scheduled?
There's too much detail. Yeah, I don't want to go on this too much.
It's public, though. It's public.
And I know it's, it's getting late, and...
This is the thing, because everybody's looking for, you know...
I think what people want...
The analogy is when you, for those that, you know, I haven't been through a divorce, but I know a lot of people that have.
Yeah.
And you sort of, you have the divorce decree, and then it sits there for 30 or 90 days or whatever, and then it becomes automatic. I think that's the analogy I would suggest to interpret to this. So, for those that want to claim that it's pending and active, then there's, there's an element of truth to that. But for all practical purposes, for common sense purposes, for purposes that you can review in a record, and that you can hold us to...
Yeah.
It's a...
For those plaintiffs, but the lawsuit is still there.
And what I don't know how many times I need to say this, is that there is zero indication that any of, any involved party, just like others that have recused, would stay involved in any legacy matters. And you can hold us to that. And this, I think, happens with some frequency. So...
The only thing I would suggest is, I, I have a sense that you feel that the Ethics Committee is sort of an adversary. They're there for you.
No, I go to, I've been to them several times.
And I know you've gone to them before. And if you look at the 2010 advisory opinion that you requested, President Coulter, when you were on the council back in 2010, the issue was, can I evaluate the job performance of the town solicitor when I have lawsuits pending? And then you withdrew those lawsuits, and by the time you were in front of the Ethics Committee getting their advice, you had, you weren't going to withdraw, you weren't filing a motion today or tomorrow, you had withdrawn, and what the Ethics Committee said was, you are now a past litigant, you have withdrawn, you may evaluate the performance of the solicitor. It seems to me you need to recuse yourself and take no action at all, as far as hiring an attorney, whether it's temporary or permanent, until such time as those lawsuits, or at least your involvement in them, is officially over, as opposed to, we're thinking about doing it, or we are doing it. The other point I would make is that I came here tonight being very troubled by the ethics of litigants against the town choosing an attorney. But after hearing people tonight, I'm much more troubled by the rush and the, the lack of an RFP. I think the way to salvage this, to make the best of an incredibly bad situation for the town, is to do an RFP. And in my experience, it took me 62 years to figure this out, but what I find at this stage in my life is, it's a lot easier to do it the right way. It's quicker, it's cleaner, you don't make enemies, you don't divide the town. Just do an RFP. Put it on the town website, call the Rhode Island Bar Association, I'm sure they have a municipal law committee. Get the word out. Give them 30 days. Tell them by the end of January, if they're interested, they need to submit a resume, not to the TTA council members, but to all seven of you. You're a body, you need to work together. When you send out an email, learn to use the CC on that email. I can't imagine that any council member should be communicating about anything involving the town without addressing everybody else.
That is a great point for discussion.
And it should happen on a regular basis. And then have the gentleman who's here this evening, and I'm sure he's a perfectly competent attorney, get in line, maybe there'll be three others, six others, eight others, and do what you ought to do. Get the resumes up on the website, have boards and commissions that are interested, meet with the candidates, window down the field to your top four or five, get the town administrator involved. Do it the right way. This is not the right way. You're, you're going down a bad path. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. We're down to two, maybe three?
She's getting close.
It's getting kind of close to 11. I'm not going to cut us off, though, so...
Deb Janik, resident of Tiverton. So, I did attend the December 10th meeting, and I'm going to kind of paraphrase. I believe Mrs. Driggs had said, "I'm suggesting that we do an interim attorney," at which point Mr. Katz said, "First, I hear of this, but off the top of my head, I have someone I can recommend, this gentleman." Why this gentleman 17 days ago, and now we're going to vote? No one's seen his resume, his credentials, his experiences? Why not two, three, giving us some options? 17 days later, we're going to vote for this man, none of us know. Response?
Well, the, the order of that conversation was, I recall, differently than what you're describing, but the, the issue here is that we have a situation where our solicitor has resigned. There are past challenges... There are past challenges to that relationship that make it difficult to proceed. Not only some of the new council members' relationship with the solicitor, but some of the incumbent councillor's relationship with the solicitor.
I object to that statement. You cannot prove that.
That make it-
I think they were quite clear in the December 10th meeting, saying they did not have issues-
No, 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 they don't have issues with him.
-with our solicitor staying on until-
The entire arrangement of the two, if you will, factions of the council related to the solicitor make the status quo-
The two factions of the council?
Just as the-
You four and these-
And the incumbents. That's what I'm referring to. That make, that make going forward with the current solicitor for an extended period of time into the new year, that is challenging. And so we propose somebody trustworthy that we could bring in to hold the spot.
How do you know?
Somebody trustworthy to a majority, to a majority of the council.
Trustworthy to you, Justin.
And I don't mean that in reference to, I don't mean that in reference to, in contrast to the current solicitor. I mean that just as opposed to a, some other attorney, nobody knows. So I suggested a name of somebody that was out there. We suggested-
Off the top of your head? Because you had not heard Mrs. Driggs' recommendation until that moment on December 10th.
Well, I had some sense of it.
You had a sense of it? You had discussed it?
Of, that's the issue, and I had thought about-
Prior to the meeting? Prior to everyone else hearing that?
We had a resignation announced, right?
So we had all given thought to how to proceed.
And we suggested.
But doing it temporary was not something that had ever been done. So if you, you had a premonition that that's what Mrs. Driggs would come up with?
So I think trying to just boil this down, where there's most dispute here, there will be an RFP process. This is just a question of timing. Some of us feel a sense of urgency in light of the resignation, and some of us feel that we should proceed immediately to a permanent. And that's really, at the end of the day, what I think this all comes down to. And I don't know that we'll ever agree on, and there's a bunch of these other collateral issues that I think will, upon close examination, will turn out to be just fine. And I actually think that everything that everybody wants, the full process, it's going to happen. But this is not a new thing, that there is an expedited process. We have had matters here that have gone out to no cost bidding, or sole source bidding, or this is, really this is a debate about, is the decision to proceed on an interim basis. And I want to stress that the full process is going to happen, and where there's disagreement about there is whether there should be an interim in the middle. I, for one, want to spend a lot of careful thought on, on the role and the budget coming into the next season on this. And so that's one reason why I don't want to rush quickly with the permanent, but we need to fill the vacancy. And so I know-
But we have, but we have a, we have them.
We have a council that has-
He's gone through, he's gone through many years of budget with us.
Graciously stayed with us for a month, and I'm sure is going to help us continue to assist in transition. But he's done at a resignation, and we need to act on that. So I know nothing I say will satisfy all of you, but I just want to sort of emphasize, that's the posture of this. And so there will be the fullest vetting possible. Now, for those that knew about this proposal two weeks ago, you know, there's been two weeks. It has been in the public record. I just want to sort of remind everybody what the process is.
What public record?
That if there is a disagreement, it's really about the decision to proceed on an interim basis.
I think there are, I think there are many issues.
No, it's-
Many levels of issues. And the spotlight is on you guys, and we're watching.
And I'll tell you-
And the taxpayers, quite frankly, deserve better.
You know, Rob, in all fairness, you're saying, you're saying we knew this two weeks ago. We also knew about the contract coming up for the tax assessor two weeks, more than two weeks ago. And tonight, we postponed it because we wanted more time to review it. And tonight, you do, we do this, and we want more time-
This is a really good point.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We want more time to review this, too.
We need to have our solicitor, or our Labor Council, if that's a change in the dynamic, review the legal work.
And that's why we want to-
We have somebody sitting in the chair right now that's willing to stay.
You're making my point on why further delay is not in the town's interest. So we have his prior work on-
He just said he'd like to not stay. He just said that. But you're forcing him to stay because the lawsuit says that we replace him. It's really not fair.
All right. How many to 11?
We moved the motion.
No, I want to make sure everybody that's had a, wants to speak once, gets to speak once, and then we're going to, we're going to have to, I mean, we have another couple hours on the agenda here.
No, I'm not staying. No.
All right, sir.
Jeff Karen, 9 o'clock, Your Road. I think one thing that hasn't been said yet is perhaps the elephant in the room. And I'd like to, since everyone's entitled to their opinion, and I've been involved with things for the last couple of years, I'd like to state my opinion of what that elephant can be, or is, I should say. Excuse me, I should say. So you might remember back in July of, a year ago July, there was a Charter Review Commission election, and the Charter Review Commission was elected. And the Charter Review Commission requested from Mr. De Sisto some help on a bunch of matters, which aggregated in, I don't know, 14, 15, 18 different, maybe even as high as 20 different written correspondences for advice and for assistance. And there was very little communication backward, and it was not clear why there was no communication backward. However, at this table right here, a statement was made by then-town council president, Demidiris, that she spoke regularly with Mr. De Sisto independently, not through the council, independently with Mr. De Sisto. And with that, it was abundantly clear that, in my opinion, abundantly clear, that Mr. De Sisto was told not to give advice to the Charter Review Commission.
Oh, wait one second.
It was abundantly clear, and that's my opinion. And that is my opinion.
Well, Jeffrey, your opinion is wrong, like usual.
And you can sue me if you want, okay?
Because I was present at the town council.
That's right, and you sat right there and said you had him on speed dial.
I talked to, well, I didn't say I had him on speed dial, Jeff.
In figurative words. In figurative words. You said it twice.
Chris is my witness, okay?
She sat there and didn't say a word on that Friday night.
I talked to Tony because I was present at the town council. We had several discussions like this.
Can I have the mic back? It's my turn to speak?
No.
I'd like the mic back.
Because you're accusing me of something.
I'd like the mic back, Mr. President, please.
No, Jeffrey.
I'd like the mic back, Mr. President.
Jeffrey.
I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet, because I want to, I want to resolve why we're in this lurch tonight. I want to finish why we're in this lurch tonight.
Rob, he's lying.
We've chosen, you know-
He is lying. And Tony, would you like to-
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait a minute, no, Jeffrey. You are not on the couch. I am.
I'm not leaving.
We have opened this to be a public forum, and anybody that has not had a chance to speak is going to get to speak, and then others can-
But they're not allowed-
Will be able to respond.
I think Tony should respond to this accusation.
And I have, I have taken so many personal attacks on myself tonight. I've been writing them down.
Oh, I'm sure you have.
And that's part of what comes with the job.
But what he's doing is he's lying about a conversation.
As have so many other people tonight have also, I won't call them liars, but they're certainly misinformed, and they have a-
I'm calling Jeffrey a liar.
And they have a right to express their opinion. I want to let him finish this, and then I want to let Mr. De Sisto have the opportunity to respond.
Well, actually-
Well, I haven't expressed my opinion yet.
I object to being compared to an elephant. I don't think I'm married to-
You're not the elephant.
No.
You missed the initial analogy.
Totally the elephant.
No, you're not the elephant.
There is, there's going to be, there's going to be, every time you go on a litigation matter, there's, there's two lawyers, and then there's a judge. So there's like three lawyers in the room, and at least somebody's going to be right or wrong, or maybe everybody's wrong on the same day. We're not going to take it personally. So go ahead and finish.
Thank you.
I have a chance to speak, and I am going to let anybody that you've mentioned by name respond.
I will just, I will just state some of the facts. The facts are that we started off the Charter Review Commission with a really good working relationship with Mr. De Sisto, so it appeared. The council leadership changed, and the, Ms. Demidiris became the president of the council, and right about that time, we got zero response, next to zero, if not zero response for months, from the solicitor, which made for a very difficult situation. We can say what we want, we, four of us were partying to the conversation here at 9:00 on that Friday night. After that, I would like to say that the, I'd like to say that the current situation we're in now, frankly, in my opinion, is in part because of an election, probably who got elected, and probably a dysfunctional working relationship by the current solicitor, who has graciously offered to help out, who stated earlier he doesn't want this to drag on forever. There's, there's history here, we need a functional relationship. This is not a functional relationship, and I want to, that, that is the elephant in the room, is the relationship. And it wasn't you, Tony. So I want to state that, and I want to state for the record, okay, I want to state for the record of what happened during that commission. 15, 20 emails went out, maybe one got responded to, for months and months and months. And the commission sat there without, without an attorney. We asked for an attorney, we didn't get an attorney, and so on and so forth. And look who got elected in this town council, okay? So that is what I want to put on the record. Thank you.
Okay, if I may, just want to say one thing, because when Denise was the council president, sometimes she told me that she, that I wasn't doing what I should be doing. And that was actually one of the times she felt that I was not as diligent with the charter commission as I should have been. So I just, I want to correct that record. It's actually the exact opposite. She gave me some criticism for that. Now, I understand that there's issues with the charter commission, and I'm not going to get into that tonight, but the blame should be here, not there.
But then, I think, thank you for being honest, and thank you for basically admitting there was a dysfunction, and it wasn't a good working relationship.
I disagree with that, and I'm sorry that, as a board of the town, you felt that way. From my position, all of the stuff that was coming in, I felt that my one major communication pretty much answered all the questions. Obviously, the client didn't think that way, and I'm sorry about that, but you know, I have to tell you something. After the election came in, I anticipated that, and that's why I sent my letter in, okay? So, you know, and of course, I'm staying in everything else. I understand that. I don't think that's the issue here now. I think you have to proceed on those other things. I don't think I'm the issue, to tell you the truth, on this. But you've just got to go forward.
What I'd like to say, too, is I do think that there is room for some reasonable debate about what level of legal services and, you know, is it fair to the town solicitor to be called upon by individual councillor members? I called up Labor Council the other day, because I signaled to him I would likely be asking him to take a look at the template employment contract, but I wanted to run it by if there's a new solicitor and make sure I understand what the rules of the game are. And I said to him, "Hey, can you just get me straight on this? Because I'm not sure, you know, I don't know that I want, you know, I'm just one person here, and I think we need to have a discussion about who calls, how much is it going to cost, who gets to incur that cost?"
It doesn't cost any-
Does, does every single member of every single board and commission get to call the solicitor? There's provisions in the charter that require, you know, if, I don't know if it's followed, but those communications are supposed to be copied to all of the council. I don't think that's happened. I think we need to look very carefully in that. So I really want to be thoughtful, and although I think Tony and I might have seen things differently in some prior roles, I think it's a fair question to be asked, is, you know, does the charter, does any commission get to call up Tony and say, "I'd like a 100-page memo on..." We had, we had 100, I can't even remember, we had like 160 proposals. Is it fair to require a 10-page memo on every single one? I don't think so. Is it fair to maybe get a little more? I think maybe there's room that we would agree. And I want to explore that. I know it won't satisfy everybody, but I want to get it right with the permanent replacement. I want to dovetail it to the budget, and I want it to be transparent, so that there aren't people that feel like individual councillors are calling up the solicitor. And that's also not fair to the solicitor, who's being asked kaj-paj legal opinions. I'm wondering if it almost need, I haven't thought it through, but I wonder if it almost needs to be a motion to seek a legal opinion. Anyway, I just want to try to bridge that gap where we can. All right. I want to, I will honor my promise, anybody that has not spoken will get to speak, but other than that, I think I'd like to close debate with the people in line. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. I promised Denise to be able to respond to Mr. Karen.
Well, I'm really not going to justify what Jeffrey said, but I do, and Rob will realize this, when you're president, you do get phone calls from the solicitor because you are not meeting as a whole. And there's certain things the president is allowed to give opinions on day to day. I never talked to Tony, and this, and Tony will justify, will say this is true, about the charter commission, until after the meeting that we had, where you told me that you were not getting response. That morning, I called Tony, and like Tony said, I said, "They feel like they are not getting your attention." And that was the only time that I talked to Tony about you guys.
All right. I'm going to stop the line with these four. So you four speak, okay? And then I'm just going to have to be, you get to close, okay? And then we're going-
Can I make a point of order, please?
Sure.
I'm not sure if I should, but I think I just have to. We've been there for more than four hours. We've had this discussion for a very long time. You've had several comments suggesting that what is happening here tonight is not doing anybody any good. And I'm speaking now as an administrator. I'm concerned that what comes out of this meeting is going to result in a prolonged impasse. It's not what we need. This council needs to act as a council. You need to think not about who's wrong or right, you need to act as a council, do now, not half an hour from now, not two hours from now, but now. Do what is right, to put an end to this, and say, "We're going to do this the right way the next time." Because working under these conditions, I'm also saying this, I think on behalf of the people that work with me, is going to be extremely difficult. Please, put an end to this.
I am going to put an end to this. We're going to take four more speakers, and then we're going to vote.
Richard Rom, 27 Cornell Road, elector. Previously, I spoke and asked that you would continue your motion. And I did that based upon the fact that the resume had not been distributed properly. What I found contrary to what, I shouldn't say contrary, what I found disturbing was these three councillors got up and left. They did not listen to our candidate.
Our candidate. Our candidate. It wasn't our candidate.
Mr., can you say it last?
Chichioni.
Chichioni.
Gio.
Gio, Chichioni. They did not listen to Mr. Chichioni, which indicates to me they could care less about our resume.
They're preserving the process. Get us through your head.
One thing that's important in town is that we show respect, okay? So please show respect. Quit yelling at people.
Stop wasting our time. Good God.
It's very difficult. I appreciate what you four do. So I would, I would ask that you not continue, that you vote. It's on a, it's on a temporary basis. His law firm seems excellent.
How do you know?
That's why I use the word "seems." Listen to the words. It seems excellent. How do I know? Right? I don't know. Seems, all right? I would ask that you appoint him.
Thank you.
Barbara Martin. It seems to me, after this long, four-hour period, that you have made up your mind. A lot of people have come and given you a different point of view, and I would hope that as councillors, you would keep your minds open- And I would hope that as councillors, you would keep your minds open to what people bring before you. And it seems to me that you have come with blinders on, you've made your decision, and that doesn't bode well for the next two years if you are not going to listen to your constituents and to take all of what they have to say into consideration. There've been some people who came up here, people with law degrees, people who are advising you to be cautious, and it seems to me that you're not listening to them at all. And that's terribly disappointing.
Very quickly, Mike Burke, 67 Derby Road. So, probably about half an hour ago or so, Mr. Katz stated that the reason we're going through this process or this motion tonight, I won't even call it a process, is because the status quo is not acceptable, which says to me that any other time that Mr. Katz or anybody else feels that the status quo of an issue is not acceptable, we're just gonna forget about what ordinances might say, what our process for doing RFPs for other issues might say, what state laws might say, what federal laws or regulations might say. So I guess you've just laid the groundwork for how you plan on doing your business.
Just, may I just for a minute? Okay, Sally Black. I think it's time, way past time, that this town really has to come together. TCC, TAA, Democrat, Republican, we're too small. It doesn't matter. We just went through the most amazing process on the school side to interview people, to have a process, and have the public come in and ask them questions. And I feel so good about it now, because if, when they complained to me, I said, "You were there, you know, why didn't you ask them?" I understand the urgency of this. I was there for all your charter review meetings, Kelly Leveque and I, through all the snow. We understand all the issues, all the different lawyers, and I know you want to get this done. But please, the seven of you, please come together. It's so important. We're gonna go down a rabbit hole again, like we did in 2012, and you all know nothing good came of that. Nothing good came of it for the town, nor the schools, the elderly, or the children. Please, let's tonight say we're all here for Tippin. Thank you very much.
Hit the last word.
Thank you. I read what you said, Sally. I think that was perfect. Let's do what's right for the town. I think I feel shame for the four of you, that you've come in with your decision made. You seem to not have listened to us. Look, only one of you is looking at me right now.
I'm writing notes.
Okay, please, okay, okay. And I would just say, do the right thing. Do what's right, not right now. Listen to your constituents and follow the process. The process that the four of you have isn't necessarily the right process for the town. And a gentleman in the back indicated that the Ethics Commission, and doing things the ethical way does behoove all of you. Wouldn't you rather have the town say, "Well, I don't agree with their decision, but at least we agree with the process"? And what you're doing is just railroading through a person that the four of you want without listening to the rest of us. And that's shameful, and I'm sad for this town. And I've lived here my whole life, and I'm sad for this town.
Okay, thank you. I think I heard two questions. Mr. Sisio, and I guess you should maybe have the chance to address them, and then we're gonna figure out what we're doing with this live motion. I'm trying to remember the two questions.
I took notes.
Okay, thank you.
I did hear, thank you again, Mr. President.
I have it here somewhere.
I really only heard two questions. One was just clarity on the fee amounts, and as I said, I believe we were trying to simply mirror the existing agreement with Mr. De Sisto's firm, which includes, for general counsel, ninety-eight thousand dollars annually. It would be divided by twelve monthly payments. I believe the, as I mentioned, Mr. Reitzma pointed out, I think we transpose two numbers, but we believe the criminal prosecution piece was eighteen thousand dollars annually, again, divided by twelve months over the period we would serve. Zoning and land use, I believe, was twenty-four thousand five hundred. Litigation work would be charged against the monthly compensation cap. We use the sixty thousand dollars, that was the annual budgeted number, so a five-thousand-dollar compensation cap. And that's what we use, we call a blended rate for attorneys of two-hundred dollars per hour. Anything above that cap would be at a blended rate of two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars per hour. And then the Labor Council, town has existing Labor Council, so we would not necessarily need to step into that role. But if there were reasons of conflict or other opportunities to perform labor work, we'd be happy to do so, again, at the same rate of two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars an hour. But we don't expect that the town would necessarily need to take advantage of that. It would be at your discretion.
Rob, I have a question. Who did you negotiate that contract with?
We took...
Who's we?
Me.
Okay.
I took the existing contract, the letter agreement. I don't believe, I don't believe there's a contract with Mr. De Sisto. I believe there's a letter agreement in response to the last...
Right, but who did you talk about these fees to?
I proposed these.
Okay.
And then I submitted it to Mr. Reitzma to get his feedback in advance of any, you know, assessment of budget, whether we're meeting a budget.
But may I ask a question? Who solicited you to do that? Who solicited you to put that proposal together?
Yeah, because we hadn't even decided if we...
I believed it was favorable to have a proposal in writing, given the expedited nature of this process. It's not...
But who asked you? I mean, somebody must have said, and said, "Hey, can you put together a proposal and submit it to Mr. Reitzma?"
I spoke to a number of the council members.
Okay, but which ca...
Those four, because it wasn't us.
I'm sorry? I couldn't...
These four council members.
I don't believe I spoke to all four of them.
Of course not, because that would be a quorum, and you're very wise not saying that.
Well, I said, to be...
It would be a quorum if you talked to those four and not us three.
I think if what you're referring to is a rolling quorum, I don't believe that...
You've negotiated the contract with the four?
Oh, no, oh, no. We, that would be very respectfully, ma'am, I, we would not run the risk of running into a rolling quorum or anything similar to that. We're happy to talk to any individual council member. We would have been happy to speak to you about our background. But the reason I sent it to Mr. Reitzma was because I thought it was best that if there was a proposal, that the town administrator have a copy of that, and then if he chose, or if you chose to request that from him, it was there. But again, this is only over the last couple days. It was because we...
But you stated you talked to several councillors. That's what you stated.
Yes, I believe that, I believe that it was suggested that the councillors could interview me or anyone on my phone.
Openly, openly.
That's right, well...
It wasn't suggested. It was not suggested.
I wasn't here, so I won't speak to them.
Call, email, what was it?
I...
We know that Ms. Driggs has sponsored this spoke.
Yep, and I spoke with Mr. Katz.
My understanding is that's it.
That's it.
I don't know.
Well, that's not several.
It doesn't sound like several to me, but...
Well, that's what he stated.
Well, I'm happy to talk about everyone I know in the room. I actually met Ms. Cook for the first time recently, but not related to these issues. I met Ms. Driggs a number of years ago, when she was running for office. I met the gentleman over there tonight, and he went hiking on Mount Washington with a good friend of mine. I know a high school friend from the room. Tony and I go to yoga together, believe it or not. Trying to avoid yelling in the room.
But can I just say one thing? I don't, I want to make it clear, I don't currently do the prosecutions.
No.
And I really never have. That's handled by another lawyer, John Bernardo. I don't have any involvement in the prosecution.
So are we getting rid of him too? Or what are we doing?
Can I...
Mr. President, John Bernardo did stop in my office, give his card, and say he wished to continue. Since it wasn't on any discussion, I heard, I didn't...
I think we're only looking to fill the role of which was resigned, so I don't think there's any suggestion that we would replace the current prosecutor. Does anybody object? I mean, that's... Okay.
Can I?
Okay, sir.
I'd like to clarify something, since it had been mentioned a couple of times, that I received a proposal from Mr. Chichioni. And I received, there's a draft proposal, which I was fine with. I certainly had an interest in seeing what the proposal was. But my response to his question whether I thought it would be helpful to, or he deferred to me to decide whether it would be helpful to distribute this to the rest of the council, I said, "That's not up to me." And there were two concerns that I had. One was, I didn't look at it as a public document. It was a draft proposal with fees that, in my mind, were being considered, but not necessarily final. So I said, "If it goes to the rest of the council, and it becomes part of me, it will be a public document." I don't know if that's what you had in mind or not. Secondly, it's not really for me to decide whether this should be on the agenda tonight, because some people might perceive it as premature, if not presumptuous. That's what I wrote to you. And I suggested you talk to the people who had suggested that you would be considered, whether they wanted it on the agenda, and they can direct me or others. But, you know, that's the reason I did not take any further steps. I didn't think that was my place.
That's fine. I'm not looking to point fingers. So just to sum up, though, just so we're clear, it's the scope of services that we have that we're replacing at the same budget or less. I mean, we can never know what litigation is gonna happen. It could be Bay Street litigation. I mean, that's, for the core rendering of services...
The top-end numbers are the same as in the current agreement, as I understand it, with Mr. De Sisto, and we would abide by that.
And we all know that no matter what the contract says, the client can discharge the attorney at any time, for any or no reason.
Yes. And to the first question that was asked by the woman, whose name I didn't catch, but, you know, would we consider even being voted in tonight? You know, I think, I think the answer to that is the same. You know, this is a contract that will for both sides, and if we find that it is impossible, given the amount of work, I think that we would have to come back to you and have a discussion about that. But, you know, look, I, to answer your question more directly, I would like to say, although I understand that this is contentious, you know, town politics in Rhode Island in particular can be very contentious. I've heard nothing tonight that would dissuade me from either the legality, the ethics, the, you know, advisability of offering to provide these services to the town. I think sometimes people forget that most towns have factions and contentious, you know, fights over almost every issue. But, you know, fortunately, as a solicitor, and I think Mr. De Sisto can agree, that's not our job, right? You are the fortunate ones to be elected to your terms every couple of years, and you get to have the political fights. You know, I would be here, as Mr. De Sisto, I'm sure has been, for you as a lawyer and a councillor, and I will not do anything in violation of my professional oaths and professional responsibilities because of your political interests. I wouldn't expect Mr. De Sisto or anyone you would hire to do the same. And that makes my job a lot easier, honestly, than it does to sit across the table there. You all have the politics to deal with. You know, I would be here if you so chose to appoint us, you know, to simply provide you with a professional service.
Well, I would like to say, I mean, the last council was pretty contentious, but more importantly, if you go back and look at the votes, I'm pretty proud of it. I think most of the votes of this council have been very strong on some tough policy issues, including some tough personnel issues. They've been six to seven to zero. We won't always agree, but I definitely am more optimistic that, just because we have some tough discussions on one issue, that it can't work out just fine over the long run. And again, I would like to stress again that this is an interim, and there will be a fuller process, and I think you should hold us to it. Okay. That said, it is 11:25, and I think it's time to call for a vote.
Rob, can I, I just want to wrap up my thoughts, if I may.
Okay. Everybody gets one more shot, and then we're gonna vote, okay?
I just wanted to point out that this isn't uncommon. A member of the audience who spoke today asked me a week or so ago, a week and a half ago, online whether any other town has ever done this, and I was curious, and I searched online. And actually, the only two processes for hiring a solicitor that I found, you know, in the first twenty or so entries, were very similar. It was Portsmouth in 2012 and East Greenwich this year, where a new council came in, selected a solicitor. It looked like in their first meeting, maybe their second. So that is not uncommon. In this process, council members have laid out, named, selected this, I named Mr. Chichioni early on. We selected this date, which was actually pushed back a week, ten days from when we initially wanted to have this conversation. And there are councillors who refuse to participate. They showed that when they got up and didn't want to ask Mr. Chichioni the questions they had objected to not knowing. It is abundantly clear to me that they will not participate in any processes if it is not the full RFP process, probably with three of us recusing for the bulk of it. And that is, shows that continuing the process is not going to serve any function. Now, I do want to express that there, whatever has been said in meetings that I did not attend, there are doubts in the air, there are questions and challenges based on the relationship of all the councillors in their own way, and a solicitor and each other. And, I mean, even this evening, while the council members were not, these three council members were not sitting here, one of them shouted something to Mr. De Sisto about the process that was undergoing while she was recused. Now, I'm not making any allegations about that, but observing that, these kinds of things foster a distrust. So, I've also, I've also sat here and listened to people who, for years, have attacked me in many, many ways, act as if this is what's gonna lose me their support. People have written poetry attacking me in a local paper, are pretending that this is somehow, I had them up until now, and I, it looks a lot like a performance to me.
What you're saying is, you don't give a damn, and you're doing it anyway.
Now, there's no, there's no...
All right. Thank you.
There's no conflict of interest to this. And as we've said, as I've said particularly, the status quo is not acceptable. What conversations there might have been, et cetera. The question is, when will that end? And as I said, it's clear that no process, other than what a minority of the council members appear to want, will be accepted by them. And as we discussed earlier, we'll be talking about the budget next week, which was one of the central considerations for wanting to move more quickly and get an interim solicitor in place. So, to answer the town administrator's encouragement from earlier, I think that for us to move forward, this is what has to be done, in the sense that the Band-Aid that has to be ripped off. And it's the only way to proceed from a set point. And I would encourage the public to watch what we do going forward. Watch what comes up with any lawsuits, or how we handle the solicitor, how the solicitor does, and see if it becomes a problem that some people have predicted. So what I'd like to ask is whether it's feasible, what the process is from here, if we vote to accept Mr. Chichioni and his firm as the solicitor. And from there, I assume it's just common to finalize the rough edges of the agreement and proceed. I mean, mainly, I want to get him participating in what we do.
You wasted our time.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, we can operate without every last, I mean, because it's pulled out, because the contract is our will too, I mean, it can be modified as many times as we want. So I think that, I think we should, we should, we should make sure that, and I think you would be agreeable to this, that everybody, I'm not pointing fingers, but it doesn't sound like everybody's had a chance to look at the engagement letter. They've heard us say that it's similar to the past. Let's get it out in the public record, and let's bring it, you know, up for further discussion. And I'm telling you now, I'm gonna commit to personally take on making sure that if the full RFP development, I had kinda had it in my head to kick off early February, but we can kick it off even earlier than that, so that we can all start to put some energy into that and describe what that looks like, define what those scope of services are, and that actually plays into the budget situation. It's hard to, it's, if I came in and said I wanted to cut the fees in half, I don't know if you would, I mean, that might change the pool of, I'm still interested. So, is there any objection to proceeding to a vote?
I have cats.
All right. I would like, since Mr. Katz spoke for your group, I would like to say something. And I'd like to clarify a couple of things. The position of, I guess, councillors Perry and Di Maderis and myself, Mr. Katz, isn't that the minority isn't going to go along with any... that the minority isn't going to go along with anything unless we get the RFP process and that three of you have to recuse and not participate ever. That's not what the agenda item said. That's not what we asked for. What we asked for, and I'd like to clarify this, is that we begin the RFP process immediately, and that those counselors who may be conflicted get an opinion from the Ethics Commission, which, I'm sorry, does not take two months. I have, you know, the Ethics Commission meets twice a month. They understand that, in many cases, the timeliness of this, it does not take two months to get an Ethics Commission opinion. It just doesn't. And that at any point, if the Ethics Commission says, "Yes, you are not conflicted and you can participate," then anybody would be welcome to participate. So to try and frame it as though we're trying to permanently block some members of the council from participating is simply not true. Read the motion, it's in English, that's what it says. You know, so, so please, let's, you know, let's be at least, you know, honest about this. And as far as, you know, we need to rip the Band-Aid off and to go forward, I, I'm, there's a part of me that's laughing, because I believe tonight, tonight, we were supposed to, in executive session, get the quarterly litigation report from Tony, which none of you have ever seen. You have, none of you have ever seen the quarterly litigation report. You have no idea what it even looks like. Yet you're more than willing to hire tonight somebody on a quote-unquote temporary basis who's going to take over a passel of litigation, some of which goes back 10 years, maybe even more. I mean, some of this stuff has been around for a really, really long time, and a lot of it's really complex. And without even having seen that report and knowing exactly what you've got on the plate-
We have the report.
Well, you haven't been, you haven't been, you haven't talked about it, you haven't been briefed by the-
I've seen the report.
Okay. Then I'm, stand corrected, you've seen the report, but you certainly haven't been updated by the solicitor as to the nature of all this. And we're going to hire somebody temporarily to take over for six months and deal with all that litigation, and then eventually, we'll get somebody else and hand it over to them. I just, you know, I think it's interesting.
Yeah, and I had a reply from the Ethics Commission within 12 days, so it doesn't, doesn't take that long.
Well, just to clarify, I had spoken with an investigator for the commission on a different issue about a month ago, and I asked him, "How long does an advisory opinion take?" And he said, "Typically, a month, up to two months." And that's what I've been saying, it could be up to two months. So you might have gotten one more, but that's just-
They told me, when I, when I talked to them, they said they meet every 10 days, and I got mine in right away, and within 12 days, I had an answer, a written response.
All right.
Could I, I just wanted to add one thing that, on a positive note, except for this issue tonight, that has been lengthy. I have been impressed. I know we come from, as Patricia Hilton said, different frame of references, maybe, but I think we've been operating, there have been a lot of seven to zero votes on a lot of issues, and I think we can move forward, and I'm confident we can.
I do sincerely want to thank, in particular, Mr. De Sisto and Ms. Ciciun for sitting through a difficult conversation to sit through. I know that, like I said, this isn't your first rodeos, but I'm grateful for that, you know, we've signed up for this. And I appreciate the feedback of the town, and I actually have been listening very carefully, and I've taken good notes. I think that I, for one, do feel a sense of urgency on the interim process, but I also am committing to make sure that the type of full process that you're looking for does happen. And if there is a disagreement, it's going to simply be about the span of a couple of months. And we may not always agree on that, but I do very much appreciate you taking the time to come out there. I have been in office, I've not been in office, I know what it's like to be on the other side of the table and be very suspicious. I've been there myself, and I appreciate, I really do appreciate the feedback on that. And I know we won't always necessarily be happy with the result, but we will keep this process going. And I want to, I want to get as much input as we can on tackling some of these issues. What should the budget be? What is a fair scope of services? Should every board and commission, and every member of that board and commission, get to ask something of the solicitor? Should a member of the town council be able to? If they do, should we be able to see it? Should the media see it? And I want that all developed, and I'd like that developed in time for a budget request, so that people can determine if they want to sign up for that. And I'm not, my only thing that I will say is that I have gotten feedback from other people that are in other offices that would never have an open forum like this and allow this to go for a full public, basically a public hearing for a couple hours. And for those of you that are disappointed with the process, I hope you at least keep in mind that we did open it up for public comment. And with that, I'd like to know if the motion still stands for a vote.
Yes.
Okay. We have a live motion and a second, and-
Repeat the motion and go maybe?
Yep, so the motion, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is to-
The word interim in the motion?
The word, interim is definitely, oh, actually, if I had it written, it was until June 30th, consistent with the closing of the budget.
Move to appoint Giovanni Ciciun as new-
Speak into the microphone.
As new councilor through 6/30/2019.
And then I'd like to see-
Could you repeat that? We couldn't hear.
Okay, so the live motion. I'm sorry, I lost my agenda here.
Move to appoint Giovanni Chichioni as new councilor through 6/30/2019.
And let's make sure that the document is circulated to the whole team and the public. Why not?
Through 6/30/2019.
It says new solicitor, which would make one-
Through 6/30/2019.
And then this contract could be renewed, so I think the word interim-
You're not going to just renew it? It might be the RFP process.
Yeah, well, I, you've heard it stated, and this is one of these, there was some allegation at the last meeting that the council hadn't followed through on a sanctuary city ordinance or something, and I committed personally to see to it, that that was brought back up, and I'm going to personally see to it. As I said, I had it in my head to have it finalized in Q1, so the process would be done in Q2, but I want to act quick, and I want to make sure that everybody gets to be a part of that process.
Town council or town solicitor in the motion?
You put council, but did you-
Solicitor.
Town solicitor.
We will not be appointing another town.
And land.
Town solicitor. I said solicitor.
Has general solicitor or land use?
Yes.
Okay. But we're clear that this is not for police prosecutions, so that, we're not disturbing bond counsel, labor counsel, we're simply filling the slots that Mr. De Sisto resigned from, and nothing more, for about six months, under the same budget. If there's any ethical stuff that pops up, we're, everybody's accusing.
For about six months.
All right. June 30th, 2019.
Max, that's the maximum.
That's the max.
Because if you're doing the RFP, you could-
Yeah, and I think we agree an RFP process is not required, but I want to do it, but I don't necessarily want to rubber stamp the one that was done before. I want to improve it, I want to make it better, and I want to lower the budget. All right, so, Donna, second to that.
Can we vote?
We have a live motion and a second. All who's in favor? Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. It is 11:20, or 11:40, and I'm willing to stay.
I need to ask you-
I can't stay.
What are the terms and conditions of that decision? Where is the contract? Where is the retainer agreement, whatever you want to call it?
Yeah, we'll get that to you.
Will you make a copy of that immediately available tonight?
Uh, sure.
Is that a yes or no?
Gio, congratulations. How to dodge.
I'm not sure that I have the authority as one person to release it, so-
It's not, I'm not condescending.
Okay.
People want to know what this gentleman's-
Yes. It's going to be the same, the same as the current rates.
All right, make a copy of it.
I don't know if I have the authority to do that myself.
Can I, can I move to adjourn?
Did you adjourn?
Could you just do the next one, because it's nothing but the board's commission which went out to advertise, and you can go to the-
Mr. President, what are you deciding to do about making this contract available?
I'm going to ask the council for clarification. Will you just hang tight for a second, okay? I want to-
You'll have to leave.
I'm going.
Tony.
Am I going to lose it?
Happy New Year.
So you're not going to make it available?
Is there, is there any objection to releasing the draft? The only objection I've heard is from the town administrator.
It's a draft.
I think, I think people who are interested in it should file a request if we have some data.
Well, here's a question, can the rest of the council get it?
Absolutely. You've been able to get it as long as the listeners have.
If Tom gets it, do you think, sorry, could I have a copy?
No, I think, I think we should require the public to submit a request, because we're not clear on whether they can have a document of this.
To be honest with you, I think it needs to be finalized and taken out. For example, the proper-
We're going to follow, we're going to follow the recommendation, administrator. We're going to finalize it, make sure the whole council sees it, or release it as soon as we can.
So you, you voted to retain this gentleman, but you also have decided not to disclose all of the terms.
I, I moved to adjourn the meeting.
I think he talked about it.
We can't be, we can't be conducting an interview with the media in the middle of the meeting.
You've got a motion adjourned, I don't know if it needs a second. Is there any objection to adjourn? Do you want a second? You want to stay?
I'll stay and finish, I only got two more items.
Justin's ready to go. We lost two. I'm willing to stay. I think Jan's had enough. I think Nancy wants us to touch on one item. Can we just give Nancy five minutes?
Sure.
I just think we should do that for the question and say, "Continue it to the next one," because the advertisement said for, to send in your applications on January 10th, so it's already set.
Okay.
It was already advertised by the time you put it.
Did you advertise it?
That's not on there.
It is.
In mind to advertise the last time, because it's done by groups, so we'll check it.
I have the December 20 paper.
And you're looking for a vote for what, till when?
I mean, I mean, you vote to continue, but it's all-
What do you want?
What do you want, Nancy?
I just want you to acknowledge that coming out on January 14.
Is there any objection to being so acknowledged by consensus?
If anybody wants to apply, they still have a right.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion to-
Second.
Is there any objection?
And I have one other item that I would have done under council items. I have a business that we're going to need to bring in for a show cause hearing, so I'm going to put that on probably the next-
How long is it?
Agenda, but I will first have to contact the attorney. Contact Mr. Ciciun.
Okay. I think we can handle that administration.